Justin, will you lead us in our implications?
Yes, sir. Please pray with me. Dear heavenly Father God, we thank you for today. We just thank you for the weather. We just ask this evening, God, that you would just be with the family of John Nelson, God, as they're grieving. I pray that you just comfort them in a way that only you can. I pray that you be with us tonight and give us wisdom and direction, Lord, as we make good decisions. We just thank you for all things. In your name we pray. Amen.
Misty, will you lead us in the pledge?
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
All right, we'll go ahead and convene our meeting and start with a roll call. Misty Cottle.
Here.
Jeff Upton.
Here.
Jan Throgmorton.
Here.
Marty Lindeberry.
Here.
John Collins.
Here.
Deana McKnight. Don Rollins.
Here.
Jimmy Condiv.
Here.
Our city attorney and city clerk are both present. The first item on our agenda tonight is the adoption of the agenda, and I do need to make an amendment in new business. I think each of you have a new item that was placed in front of you for a change in our sewer bonds that the state sent to us this past week. So I would like to move that to item two of new business.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda with that change.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is the approval of our meeting minutes from our May 9, 2023 meeting. Do we need to make any changes to those? Motion?
I make a motion that we accept them as granted. Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is our public forum, where we encourage the public to come and speak. We do ask that you try to keep it to a maximum of two minutes per speaker. Remarks made to the council won't be acted upon tonight, but the council may converse back and forth with you. Is there anyone who would like to address the council tonight?
Go ahead.
Come on up, tell us who you are.
All right. Hello, I'm Grace Morales, and we've been talking a lot about ordinances, sign ordinance, yard ordinance. I'd like to talk about fireworks ordinance. The past several years, I did kind of a deep dive on Facebook, and it looks like the only communication that is going out from the city is on the city Facebook page with either the ordinance written out or just a link to it. And I would love to see more communication go out about that. As it is right now, the ordinance is that fireworks are legal in the city limits between nine and midnight on just the third and the fourth. Last year, I, it was our first Fourth of July back in town, and I put something out on Facebook and was met with very nasty comments, so much so that I was getting threats in my direct messages. So I took that down. Also during my deep dive on Facebook, was looking at kind of comments on the old posts of when the ordinance had been posted, and it's pretty overwhelmingly that it says, oh, that's not enforced, oh, it's a joke, multiple comments to that nature. So I would just love to see more of an effort kind of put out rather than just assuming that the citizens are going to look that up and find out when it's okay for them to do fireworks in town. I know that one side of the marquee has advertising for the Carter Park fireworks display, and the other side is the blood drive, which is on the 28th. So I feel like that would be a great time after that is over, put just a quick little reminder of when fireworks are allowed in city limits. And then also maybe something, I know that flyer goes out each year that is advertising for Carter Park, maybe a reminder on that as well. Yeah, just something that is a big point of contention, I know, for a lot of people in our town, those of us with small children, veterans, people with pets, you know, just something, something I wanted to bring forward.
Okay.
So thanks.
Any questions for Grace before you step down?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Grace.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Tell us who you are.
Somebody apparently can't hold on to a piece of paper. Good evening. This is Tom McKinney. I'm over on 105 Southwood Street. I was planning on trying to make it down last month to address y'all about the new West Fork plan, but business matters interfered, and I did not make it. So I thought I'd come down and kind of give my two minutes for it tonight, but that's all right. One of my favorite views is coming south from 49 from Greenland when you hit the crest of that hill before you go down to the West Fork exit, and that's just, you know, that's just great. To me, that's what says West Fork, and I know part of the goal of the plan is to try to maintain that image and the small-town feeling here of West Fork. And the plan is a good start. I know it's just a template, and you all keep emphasizing it's not zoning, and I understand that. I've been involved in city planning long enough to know that. But as a template, there are other things that need to be brought up, I think, that were not really covered, and of course, just down the road when decisions are made. I don't think there was enough emphasis given on protecting the West Fork of the White. That is, you know, the main feature, I believe, of West Fork, particularly since I've been walking down along it on Dyke Creek Road for 35-plus years. And I must say that in all this time, this is some of the best water quality I've seen. I know the state and the county have been working on the West Fork. There's a stabilization, bank stabilization program going down there right now. Mostly agree with their methods, but it seems to be doing all right. But I'm very pleased at the water quality, and there has been an increase in the public use down there. And since I am down there quite a bit, I tend to pick up what trash I can. So one thing I would like to ask possibly is you all to establish a anchored trash can of some sort above the high-water mark down there. Mostly just carry some trash home with me, but, and most everybody is very good about picking it up after themselves. There are a few that are not, and there's some things I just don't want to carry home with me. So if that's a possibility, then I would appreciate, you know, somewhere to deposit that down there. And things come up, I'll make myself brief here, things to, I would like to see the city consider ordinances, either strengthening, which I'll have, or adopting new ones, as possibly a tree preservation ordinance. And there was no mention of park space, additional park space or green space in the plan. You managed to talk about, credit for everything else, but there was nothing of that nature. And so I'd like to see some sort of green space ordinance in place, a grading ordinance, strengthened or adopted, to make sure that any kind of silt from development does not reach the river. Some sort of a slope or cut ordinance, hillside cut ordinance, I would like to see adopted or strengthened. And I think the buffer zone along the river needs to be expanded, and because that is, folks have worked hard and spent a lot of money, and I know the city's been working hard to keep that river as clean as possible. And I think that would be a consideration, I would ask you to seriously consider either double or triple the size of the buffer zone. And so again, just thank you very much for coming to speak, and I know this is an ongoing process, and I'll be communicating with you all more in the future. So thank you very much.
Any questions for Tom?
When you said trash can, you're talking about the low-water bridge or?
Dyke Creek Road Bridge. Maybe where that turnout is, where the rocks are right there by where the sewer pipes that the plant used to be. And I know it can attract trash as well as be receptive for trash, but I'm just trying to think ahead. It would, you know, I'm down there almost every other day.
That's a good idea.
It would just be something that would make it, you know, make it easier on me to keep the place clean. I know other folks are down there also. I've found some folks walking around trying to pick up cigarette butts, things like that. So if folks feel very protective of that area, then if it's a possibility, that'd be great.
So Tom, before you sit down, thank you, one, for coming in and sharing your thoughts. Two, I want to make sure you're aware that the plan that we have passed so far is the preliminary.
Correct.
Right? So the planning commission is now moving into the actual zoning ordinance. That zoning ordinance is going to address 90% of the ideas that you brought up. So that, those are all housed in the zoning ordinance as opposed to the overview that we've passed so far.
I plan on attending.
Good, good.
Also.
Yeah, so they usually meet the third Thursday of each month.
Yes.
And that's where we are transitioning to at this point.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Tell us who you are, sir.
My name is Justin Rizley. As a, as someone who has coached flag football and Pee-wee baseball through now, both the city of West Fork and the city of Rogers, I just want to compliment West Fork's Park and Recreation Department. Chad and TJ do a wonderful job. In almost every single aspect of the Parks and Rec Department, West Fork is better than what we have experienced at Rogers. It's cheaper here, the uniform situation is better, the program is better, the organizational structure is better, the umpires are better. You have two of them. Well, we only have one this year. The fields are in better shape. I mean, every single aspect of not only their flag football program, but their summer baseball program is head and shoulders above Rogers. So I just want to thank you guys for what Chad does, and you better take care of him because if not, we're going to pull him up. And I'm stealing because we don't have a Chad in Rogers, and we would like one. But anyway, your Parks and Rec Department is wonderful, and I want you guys to know what you have and who you have here and how they compare to the cities around, and just completely outshine cities, you know, way bigger than ours.
Thank you, Justin. You have questions for Justin?
No, I, thanks for saying that.
Just leave him alone, that's all I can say.
Did you send him, did you get the cash in his pocket on his way out?
He's not allowed to talk to Chad anymore.
That's right.
All right, anyone else? Yes, ma'am, tell us who you are.
Good evening, everyone. Stephanie Reynolds, and this is more relevant for the maintenance of rural property that's on the agenda for later, but we did bring some publications about native landscaping for everyone in the audience and on the council. If you're interested, you can pick it up after the meeting, I'll have available for everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Okay. So before we move into business reports, I want to address something really quick. I hope everyone is aware of some of the latest news locally that's came out. Fayetteville is now working in the dark ages. They had a cyber attack on their city, and this is something that a lot, often, we take for granted. But I want to highlight to city personnel, the council's well aware that we're under attack. You guys, at least one of you a month, get an email from me that I need you to buy some gift cards or help me with something. So I just want to highlight that for staff. It is a real threat. Fayetteville is dealing with it in a very real way. They have cut off all internet communication. Brian, how's that working at the police department?
Oh, well.
Oh, well. I heard that they were literally, you couldn't pay with a credit card for your water bill right now, that cash and check only, so.
In person.
In person, yes. So it is a struggle. It's something that we need to be aware of. It's something the city needs, we can do better, I'm sure, that we can do better, but anyway, just so everyone's aware.
Yeah, they have a big IT department, and they got nailed.
That's right.
Bigger places than them get nailed.
That's right. So anyway.
And it's going to be a bigger threat as time goes.
Guess it will. All right, with that, we'll move into our business reports. Walter, I need you, I'm going to move you down one. Chad needs to get back to the parks.
Good, bro.
We've heard how great Chad is.
I didn't ask much, you know.
So Chad, if you would, give us a parks report real quick.
First of all, I was on Rogers or where else, and on my own, on my own at least. I appreciate those words, but I tell you, I couldn't do the things I'm able to do without you guys because I have a council and a mayor and other city departments that support the parks, the resources. I get a lot of things I asked for, and I couldn't do it without that. So no matter what, you got to have a city that supports your parks to be able to have them in the condition that we do. So I thank you guys. So I'm going to be quick, I hope. Baseball season is wrapping up. We're having tournaments as we speak, end-of-season tournaments are going on right now. If all works out well, we'll be done by Thursday, which I'm thankful of that also. It's been a good year, it's been a fun year, but it's time to come to an end before it gets any hotter, especially. Our restrooms at Riverside have been in and functional for quite some time, and I'm happy to report that I've been very pleased that they, how well they've been taken care of so far. They're not that hard to clean. I was really dreading taking care of them, but it's not been that hard, and people aren't respecting them so far. We haven't had, they're not messing them up, we have no big messes, no vandalism, things like that. So far, they seem to appreciate of them and not tear them up, and I'm very thankful for this. They look nice, I think, and, my phone's going off right now, so I'm going to ignore it. They can, they can deal with it. Then the other thing is the Fourth of July event. It is the, on the third this year. We do have it on the marquee. I'm working on new flyers. Amanda's helping me at City Hall get some new flyers, and we're going to work on getting some of that advertising out as early as tomorrow. We've been preparing for that. Vendors are all booked, our entertainment's booked. We've got several donations. I think we've got about $3,400 in monetary donations right now. And then we've got product as well and other services that are already donated as well. So our donations are coming in well. We've got several volunteers lined up. We're always looking for more. So any of the city council members, I know a lot of y'all stepped up, helped in the past, but anyone that's going to be here and is willing to help, will take it. Just let me know. The food service is where we probably need most of our help. Last year, we were a little thin on that, so I'm trying to actually overbook my volunteers for that, and if we have to get too crowded, we got to turn them away, but anyone that can help with that, we'd great. Anyone in the city that wants to volunteer, reach out to me or City Hall and let them know, and we'll find something for you to do for sure. We are, the start time and everything's going to stay the same. The only thing we're really changing is the schedule, the musicians, we're going to push them a little bit. We usually start to go six to eight. We're actually going to go seven to nine this year. For one, it's a little bit hot. We had one of our musicians start work with that last year, and so we're going to push that and go a little bit later. And also, we'll be less of a gap between when we end our entertainment and when fireworks start as well. We've kind of went with that schedule in the past because we had to get, we had our musicians in our fallout zone, we had to break everything down, our stage and everything, get everything out. We've moved it outside of the fallout, so now it doesn't take as much time. So I think we're going, we'll be fine ending it around nine o'clock, and so we'll have time to get them out of the way before we move on to fireworks. And I think that's it.
Any questions for Chad? Anyone want to volunteer while we're here?
If you want to tell me now, write your name down, that'd be great. If you don't know now, but you even know later, please let me know. So, okay. And I'm going back to the wall.
Okay. Thank you for coming, Chad.
Don Troy, that's your name.
It was nice to see you. It's been a while.
It has been a while. I shouldn't be, I'm going to try to plan a vacation around this time next month.
Okay. Walter, you going to give us a plan in a minute?
Evening. So I don't really have much of anything. We didn't meet last month because we didn't have any agenda items, and this month, we also don't have any agenda items, but it'll be a good opportunity for us to get our other commissioners up to speed on the text of the Title 14 change that we're doing. And Mr. McKinney, that'd be a real.
I think you.
It's this Thursday coming up, the 15th here at 6:30, so if anybody wants a chance to put their two cents in, it'd be a good time to, at least just, what we've gotten so far. So yeah, that's about it. It'll be a real easy meeting, should be.
Any questions for Walter? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Tracy, you want to give us a court report?
I'm going to keep my short sweet too, because I'm supposed to be meeting in Fayetteville in five minutes. So on our, I'll just tell you a little bit, the dispersments, we were up 9,000 from what we were last month, but we were down 3,000 from the same time last year. Our dispersments last year to this year were down about 15,000 overall citations. We were up 80 citations from last month, down 400 citations overall for last year. So there's a lot less. Anyway, I want to thank Justin Goggins for getting us set up with Google Voice texting, and so we were able to send out text messaging and remind people of court dates, or let them know they missed payments, or missed court dates, or whatever, and that's working really well. I have training coming up next week, so I'll be at the Court Manager Program. It's going to be class number three out of six, so I've got two this year and then two again next year. I think that's pretty much what I have.
Okay. Any questions for Tracy?
Don's being.
Thank you.
Well, I think you can make it Fayetteville.
I was going to say, oh, you're good. Yeah, to get Fayetteville.
Put it on your Fayetteville.
Thanks, Tracy.
That was hilarious.
Blair?
It took me a little second to get that, and I was like, oh, God, that's funny.
All right, well, checkouts at the library were up 7% at around 2,800, and in-person visits to the library were up 20%, so that's a lot, at 2,100. The Friends of the West Fork Library raised over $2,000 from their chocolate buffet, and 1,500 of it went to the library to support our summer reading program. The Washington County Master Gardeners have implemented the annual Arkansas Diamond Plant Trial at the library. This program showcases plants that do well during an Arkansas summer. And lastly, the library has a new true crime display, true crime, sorry, display up at the library in the lobby. And obviously, we have our summer reading program, so we have, we have a lot going on. I could just keep going if anybody, if anybody's like, oh, she left that out, it's because we just, we have a lot going on. But if you're interested in the summer reading program, you can still sign up. If you're an adult, you can participate this year as well, so you can come to the library, pick up a pamphlet, and get reading.
Any questions for Blair?
Sounds like a busy summer.
So, and she left out, the Master Gardeners putting new beds down there.
I know, there's a lot, there's a lot that I could, yeah.
Yeah, right outside the windows, new flower beds.
She looked at the agenda and saw how short it was.
She's like, oh, it's a short night, yeah.
She didn't want to be the one.
They're getting ready to get a new parking lot, about to start on that, get closer.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Blair.
Thank you.
Police Department.
Good evening.
Ex-Chief Goggins, how are you, sir?
Great. First and foremost, I'll start with this. Thank you so much to everybody that supported us Saturday with the services for retired Chief John Nelson. That wasn't easy, but the support was very helpful, specifically the Fire Department did a great job in honoring and helping him out. Washington County Sheriff's Office and the Fayetteville Police Department provided both their honor guards, so we did full honors for him at the graveside. I'm sure I'm going to miss some people. Central EMS also staged here and showed respect. I believe multiple churches in town, I think Unity, Baptist churches helped with food and the reception. We had a council member present too, I know, to serve drinks, so a lot of people, and I'm probably missing some people, like I said, there was a lot going on. It was an emotional day, I'm sorry if I didn't name you all, but thank you very much for the support, the family. Stay in contact with the family the whole time, trying to make sure we did everything the way they, everyone wanted, and did our best to show respects across the spectrum. They are all pretty well satisfied for what we have, and they were very, very thankful. So, yeah, I think that's all, say about that before I get too far on that. So, yes, I have a new addition. We, he's livestreamed it last time, it was, actually, it was 6:19 when Alex was born, before the meeting, not during the meeting.
Okay.
I just wasn't quick on the updates because I was kind of busy. So we do have another baby boy. He's doing great, mom's doing great, and sleeping better than we deserve, and so that's doing great. So since we did it last meeting, I had to bring it up now, the pump book intact. We still have Beck and FTO, who's doing good. We have, we're still on our three-year audit for our ACIS and CGIS. We've done the draft on that, the pre, there might be multiple steps, I'll be honest with you, but we went through the checklist, everything looks really good, buttoned up some stuff, so I think we'll be fine with that and being full compliance. Finished up the school year, obviously, last month, taught some stop-the-lead classes to some high school students, so that was really fun. We're going to be supporting the school as they move forward with their CSSO program. The Police Department, as in myself, and the Police Department as a whole, is going to play as much of a role with that program as they move forward as far as the training and incorporate them into our active shooter training that we do regularly at the school. We'll try to do that this summer, so we're really actively working with the school as they move forward with the program this summer. There's a little attaboy there and from Prairie Grove, we did have an officer, Officer Williamson, and I believe you're, well.
Which one?
From Prairie Grove, the active shooter in Prairie Grove. Turned out to be a domestic kind of thing that turned into, anyways, we did help with that, and so Prairie Grove did thank us for that, and that letter's in there for you to see that. Let's see, coming up, we have the blood drive, June 28th. Come support the Police Department. If you support this Police Department, you will receive two free tickets to a natural stick. But only, don't listen to anybody else. Anybody else that follows me is just making stuff up and it's all. You will receive two free natural sticks, only if you donate for the Police Department. So, we're still probably not going to wait, but we'll be there, we'll be donating, and we appreciate your support, whichever bucket you put your thing in. And lastly, I'd like to introduce to you guys our new chief, Bruce Halliburton, who's just arrived yesterday. And I guess I'll let you introduce yourself.
As Justin said, I'm Bruce Halliburton. I'm going to be your new police chief starting tomorrow. Just a little quick bio about me, this is my 32nd year in law enforcement. Started a week after I turned 20 years old, and I've been doing this my entire adult life, and I want to thank the mayor and council and the citizens of West Fork for giving me the opportunity to achieve a career goal of mine by becoming a chief of police. Promise to be as dedicated to this job as I've ever been to anything, because this is a big opportunity for me, and again, I just want to thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Any questions for Chief Halliburton? I got to get used to that. I've been, it's been Bruce until tonight. I got to get.
If you're the boss, it's Bruce, yeah.
Smart.
Any questions for the chief?
Are you still in?
No, that's, that's going to be omitted. I'm at the extended stay of America in Fayetteville right now. I rented a house once, online, sight unseen, and I will never do that again. That didn't work out well for me. But I'm looking forward to finding my place in this community, and hopefully I can be helpful. Me and Chad are going to have to talk about some stuff, but, again, I just want to thank you guys, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Okay. Thank you, Bruce.
Welcome.
So one last thing concerning the Police Department. I would like to give a thank you to Justin Goggins. Justin, I know I haven't conveyed it well, but you have done a fantastic job serving as interim chief, and you have done it. and you have done it in a time that has not been easy. So, I want you to know from the bottom of my heart how appreciative I am for what you've done. I ask, I feel like I ask a lot of the chief, in particular of all of the department heads. Justin and I, we've had conversations in early mornings, we've had conversations in late afternoons, evenings. But throughout the whole thing, Justin has been there, he's been supportive of me. The Police Department in, in particular, has a tough go of it. They handle some things that sometimes the mayor needs to know about. It's a little bit different than the Finance Department, right? There's probably no reason, if Christie calls me at midnight, we really got a problem. But Justin has done a great job of not overloading me with the day-to-day of the Police Department. He's shown great maturity in what the mayor needs to know and what, what needs to be handled within the department. And you've just done a fantastic job, Justin, and I can't thank you enough for that.
Thank you, Justin.
But now it's back to sorting. I guess he's got a silence on that, dude.
Hey, Mayor. What about this? Officer Williamson is appreciated greatly on this, and I think that he deserves a thank you from all of us. So, we need to recognize the fact that he was very active in that, and that we appreciate it.
Absolutely.
That was a pretty big ordeal.
Was it?
Obviously so. And, you know, we don't get many thank you letters. As Justin pointed out, you know, they took the time to write this, and so it is a big deal, so...
It is a big deal, I think. And they named him specifically. So, obviously, he did something that impressed him, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Officer Williamson, for assisting in that. Something going on. Alright. Public Works, Isaac.
Not much. Our water loss is still down, and our sewer flows are down. And the gas company contractor's gone, so things are slowing down a little bit. Catch on, catch up on some much-needed mowing. This last month, I did meet with the Health Department to do our sanitary survey, which we do every three years. They go through all of our bookkeeping and all that, so I should have that report back, and I'm hoping by the end of the month. One thing we didn't do last year that was on the schedule that we have scheduled for this year is we have to do a tank inspection every five years on our storage tanks. That is in the works. We're hoping by the end of July to have all our tanks inspected, so there'll be a tank inspection report of all the things that we need to do to it, so... The GIS training that we've been talking about, I did the first part today. The interface training where they're kinda setting it up to accommodate us specifically. It's kinda for a broad water and sewer. So, they're taking a bunch of stuff out that we don't need. So, that's the first part of it. Then, they're looking at the twenty-first, twenty-second, being here and doing like onsite training, so... So, it's really interesting. It's really gonna be a neat thing. We can, we can use that as data storage for when we go out and do repairs on sewer, repairs on water. We can store those points. Those won't be available to the public. They'll be for us only. The public will be able to see only where the mains and fire hydrants and meters and stuff are at, so... And we'll be able to overlay that with our zoning, our service area map, all that. So, it's gonna be really neat. It's really gonna bring us kinda out of the dark ages a little bit. And, and hopefully lead us into more of a high-grain maintenance program, because we don't have one now, so now we can go out and give all of our fire hydrants an ID number and be able to track maintenance of them, and so it's gonna be a really neat thing. Other than that, been helping Shannon a little bit in the background on her library project, trying to get that off the ground. And trying to get Henry's hut ready to move down there to library, library halls, somewhere there, wherever they're putting it, so... So, we've been doing that kinda in the background too. But that's about all I got.
Any questions for Isaac?
With the rain, did you, were you able to find any, any more infiltration areas?
We have. With the flow monitoring, McQuillan done, and just me going out in the middle of the night at two o'clock in the morning and popping manholes, we get a lot of water from Maple and White. That's our big contributor. We found one right here on Wheeler, back over here, some short pieces. More manholes leaking than I can count, so... And that's just what we can see. We can, we can only speculate that there's several service lines out there that are doing the same. And we try to look for cleanup caps off when we're reading meters and doing stuff like that, but sometimes those are hard to find. And it's, it's mowing season, so they're getting cut off, and nobody reports them, so we just have to track them down. But, yeah, we, we do have, we're looking at replacing White Street, at least two Maple, and then replacing a manhole on Maple, and we're looking at replacing this entire piece.
So, manhole, it's not, it's not one of those deals I'm going in and do a liner end up like you, you had in some of the others, or...
Yeah, I mean, some of these repairs are, you know, fifty feet walls.
Right.
So, before you, I mean, if you go down through there and turn Maple Street into a zipper, we'd just, we'd be better off just to replace the entire thing, rather than make twenty-five repairs on a three-hundred-foot section, so... And just have one street cut. This, this piece right here on Wheeler is, well, from the manhole on Campbell, it's about a hundred and twenty-five feet up, but the whole bottom is just cracked, and it just squirts water straight up through the bottom. So, we'll replace it all the way to midnight, that whole section, so...
Anything else for Isaac?
Thank you.
Thanks, Isaac. Chief Myers?
Not a lot either, but we're probably responsible for some of the water loss for Isaac, because like every time we turned around last month, we were spraying kids at the school. It's like every other day, so we'll probably take a little heat over that, but, but if, that school is open. Several calls, it doesn't look as busy, because we had a hundred last May last year. We're down about thirty from that, but still busy. I would like to recognize one of our firefighters, Manny Green, went out on her own, took DMT, graduated DMT class. So, now we have another certified DMT in our, our department, helps in grants, a lot of things, the number of... Wasn't gonna say a whole lot, but no pun intended. He drew first blood, so blood drive is twenty-eighth. You know, if you vote, you know, for the Fire Department, we're gonna feed spaghetti. I don't know what they're bringing.
And I'm gonna get a T-shirt with yours, and, and T-shirts and tickets when I leave.
Yeah, you know.
Everybody gets T-shirts. And tickets.
T-shirts and tickets.
Just get fun, you know. I wouldn't be sad to let them wear this year, so... Yeah, not everybody agrees with me on that. But, yeah, it is twenty-eighth, nine to three, Community Center. You can get on the internet, on their website, cbco.org, pre-register, save a whole lot of time when you get there. So, we would like to see as many people as humanly possible.
And what's the goal?
As long as they go for us.
No, I mean, sixty units, isn't it?
Yeah.
I don't know. I thought that's what Travis said.
You know, I should've wrote that down, but I don't know what I told him what last year.
It seems like it was fifty-three or fifty-something, and I thought he was shooting for sixty this time.
We love it, sixty, that'd be awesome.
I thought that's what it was.
I think it was forty last year, and we cut that by five maybe, so I think they're upping it a little bit. It's in the emails, I can't tell you.
Anything else for Chief Myers? Thank you, sir. Christie?
And budgets are looking really good. We, our bank balances for the city are up a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, and our budgets overall are two-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand under budget. All the departments are well under budget. And our sales taxes continuing to increase just a little bit. City sales taxes up thirteen percent from this time last year. I have to brag on all the department heads. It seems like every year we tighten the budgets up a little bit more and a little bit more, and every year they come under budget more and more each time. Luckily, we don't have any major disasters or anything, but they all do a really good job staying within those numbers and, and being as tight as they can, and still running their departments in a great way. So, Water Department, bank balances are up twelve thousand dollars. Water loss is at twenty-two, which is down considerably from the first of the year. And if you notice, our sewer income over expenses is, we are at a loss of a hundred and thirty-four thousand for this year. And I keep saying each month, I think next year will be, or next month will be a little bit better, and I'll start even itself out. Last month was fifty-one thousand in the hole, so we hope next month is a whole lot better. And it's been a lot drier, so I think it will be, and hopefully it'll continue that way for the rest of the year and offset a little bit. We have twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen audits complete. I may have emailed eighteen out. I don't know if I've gotten a complete digital copy of nineteen yet, so I haven't emailed that. My intention was just to wait till they're all done, bring them all to council at one time and approve them, but I just want you guys to know that those are still underway. Last time he talked to me, he's still hoping to have everything complete by the end of July. So, I expect twenty-twenty for water anytime. He did, for the Water Department, because of the sewer project, we had, we expended more than seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand in some federal funds for two years, I think it was. So, he's gonna have to do some additional federal reporting for that, so that's probably gonna add to our balance with him, a couple of thousand dollars each for each one of those years. But it's required, so we don't have a choice but to do that, give it those expenses.
And it's getting done.
And it's getting done, yes.
It is.
And it's going pretty smooth for having a new auditor. They've, they've been really good about being clear on what they need, and I think we've been able to supply everything pretty easy to them and had quick responses from them and us back and forth. So, it's been good communication.
Any questions for Christie?
How come the bond total expense was more this time?
In May and November, we pay a loan that we don't pay the rest of the year. We just have two payments a year on that, and it's a little over seven thousand dollars. It's just paid twice a year.
I mean, there was a reason.
Anything else? Okay. Go ahead and say hello, Christie, for a minute or two. So, I'm gonna take this opportunity before we move into old business. Jan kinda stole some of my thunder a while ago. But a couple of big things that have happened recently with, with employees. So, we, as mentioned, we have a letter thanking Officer Williamson. Says, "Dear Chief Goggins," just so that the, the public can hear what we were talking about. "Dear Chief Goggins, I'm writing on behalf of the Prairie Grove Police Department to express our sincere gratitude for the outstanding assistance provided by Officer Williamson from the West Fork Police Department during a homicide investigation and crime scene security on May eighteenth. Officer Williamson went above and beyond in his commitment to the case, demonstrating exceptional professionalism and a willingness to follow direct orders. His dedication to preserving the integrity of the crime scene greatly contributed to our ability to gather evidence and pursue justice. We truly appreciate the valuable support and outstanding service provided by Officer Williamson and the entire West Fork Police Department." That's pretty amazing, that somebody would take the time to write that. Thank you. Christie was gonna leave this completely out tonight, and I was glad I was able to catch it, that it wasn't in the packet. I was expecting it to be there. So, Christie, as we know, does, does a lot, Financial Department. We have a bond issue coming up that we're gonna vote on in a minute, that Isaac and Christie both need. Everyone needs to know the work that they've put into that. It's gonna save the, the city about one-point-two million dollars over the course of, of the lifespan of the sewer bonds. And it's work that Christie and Isaac and Nick put in to get this accomplished. But Christie has also just completed the first year of a two-year program that she signed up for. It's a certification program through the Arkansas governmental manager program. So, the first year included a hundred and forty hours of class time. This is in conjunction with her day job, twenty-five hours of professional development, ten hours of volunteer work. And the classes are managing public disputes, navigating change, strategic doing, and cultural humility. Competency goals of the program include leading people, developing self, change leadership, and focus on public service. So, a hundred and forty hours of class time, twenty-five hours of professional development, ten hours of volunteer work. Wow. While running the Finance Department, I don't know if she's done any weeding of the flower gardens this year or not, but she has been known to do some of that too. So, Christie, thank you for everything you do, especially...
And she lets you call her and ask her questions.
Yes, she does. Yes, she does. It's, it's just one of those things that oftentimes, and I say this to department heads all the time, we, we struggle, whether it's West Fork, whether it's, whether it's Fayetteville, it doesn't matter, the, the city or the organization. You get comfortable, and you get complacent. And West Fork is blessed with not only employees and staff, but community members, council members, that are constantly going, getting outside of that complacency and doing things that are extraordinary. And I get complacent oftentimes with, with not recognizing and making sure that, that everybody else... I see all of this, right? But oftentimes, everyone else doesn't see the things that we're doing. So, I just wanted to take a minute to highlight that before we're moving on tonight. And with that, we'll get back to business. Old business, ordinance number five-one-five, Maintenance of Real Property. Everyone has a copy of the revised edition of this. I think our committee members who worked diligently to help get this in order are satisfied with it. Tom has made the revisions, and I think we're ready to move forward with it if the council is satisfied.
A motion to suspend the rule, read by title only.
In a second.
We have a motion in a second to suspend the rule and read by title only. Do what?
Willful.
Thank you. Misty Cottle?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden?
Yes.
Marty Lindebury?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Don Rollins?
Yes.
Jimmy Condon?
Yes.
That motion has passed.
Mayor, it's an ordinance to amend Chapter five point one to Maintenance of Real Property to West Fork Police Department. In order to provide an exception for vegetation beneficial to the health of local ecosystem, and you would receive a motion to pass the ordinance.
A motion to pass the ordinance?
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Okay. Misty Cottle?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden?
Yes.
Marty Lindebury?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Don Rollins?
Yes.
Jimmy Condon?
Yes.
And that motion carries. That has been approved. Thank you to the committee, for all of your work. Very much so.
Pollination encouraged in this area.
Fantastic. City attorneys just informed me that we are now on the cutting edge with regards to this ordinance as far as recognizing the importance of pollinators and the importance of having ordinances that support, support that. Mabes, thank you. Next item is the ARPA project, two zero two-three dash one zero. So Christie has, has laid out in your packet all expenditures that have came through that ARPA project from the beginning of it, as well as current projects that we would like to get approved. For a total of seventy-six thousand one hundred and twenty dollars, those projects are a remodel, some maintenance work, a facelift at the Fire Department, some security measures in the courts, and some SCADA equipment on our water tanks. Any questions with those projects?
I'm not, I'm not trying to nitpick, but one of the projects is the twenty twenty-three dash twelve, the court reinstall key fob.
Mm-hmm.
And again, it's just around two hundred dollars, but are there two, are there only two employees in the court? I just, I just wanted to understand why we would need key fob access for that.
So valid question, and I think Tracy's not here to, to explain it, but I think they're wanting it for the safety purposes of those doors automatically locking at different periods of time. It also, my understanding is other departments and personnel had key fobs to that, instead of handing out keys. They were easier to turn off key fobs if we no longer wanted someone coming in, as opposed to trying to collect a key.
Or change the door codes.
Change the door codes, yes. It also gives a, a monitor of who has came and when.
You can restrict those to even thirty minutes in one day, and which days, and there's, there's a lot of really good security built into that system.
Oh, yeah, I have a key fob for my job, but.
You're saying there's two employees?
There's two employees, what, why would we need key fobs? I just wanted to understand that, so.
So we had it prior to the remodel of this building, and they, you know, all of that changed and was ripped out. We still have the magnets, I think, on the doors, so it's, it's really just coming in and putting the key fobs back in place.
I like the, what's happened with the interest on these.
Oh, yeah.
That's pretty good, that's pretty cool. That'll save a few notes.
Any other thoughts, questions, concerns, motions?
The security cameras will be for this building?
Yes.
Okay.
No. Oh, I'm sorry, that's, that's at the administration building.
Okay, alright.
A motion to approve?
A second.
Motion, second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries.
I'm going to stay.
Okay. We still have a motion to pass. Thank you.
Just getting it on there.
What's next? Item number two of new business is the amendment we put on there for changing our water and sewer bond. So, so what this is talking about, in particular, the city petitioned the state for some ARPA funds. ARPA funds are some federal government dollars that were earmarked originally. Originally, they were pushing us into all cities, government entities, into water sewer infrastructure projects. That lasted a little while, and then they, they opened that, those ARPA funds up to just about any project a city wanted to, to use them for. The city of West Fork has, has maintained that, that we are still using that mostly for infrastructure projects, with the exception of the, the few projects that we just passed. It's all been used for infrastructure projects, water sewer in particular. But we've petitioned the state, they came out with some new programs, one of which we could apply for some grant forgiveness. Actually, when it first came out, we could just apply for some money. It turned into, it was grant forgiveness, but it's eight hundred thousand dollars that applies to that, that sewer grant that we took out for replacing that sewer, or adding that sewer line to Fayetteville, tying into Fayetteville Sewer. But with that, we went ahead a step further, and we've also applied for some interest rate changes. So essentially, we're, the state has granted us approval to refinance our water and sewer debt. What we're doing here is we're reducing interest rates from two, two point five down to one seven five, from three percent down to two point two five, so on and so forth. All in all, we are receiving an eight hundred thousand dollar grant reduction. This reduction in interest rates is knocking off approximately another four hundred thousand dollars of that, that bond note. And, and with that reduction of roughly one point two million dollars in bond over the course of this, we're also cutting roughly ten years off of the, the time of that bond. So it's going from a fifty-year bond where it started, down to forty in some cases, and it's actually multiple bonds, so they're, they're not all fifty-year bonds, but, but we are cutting roughly ten years off, so. Any questions on that? Unfortunately, I say unfortunately, the state sent this letter out to us, the approval letter, on June the fifth is when they, when they dated it and mailed it, and then, of course, at the, the back of it, if, if you would like to accept this, we need to know in writing by July first. They didn't give us a lot of time to, to think about it, so I do think it's a good, the city is coming out ahead all the way around on this.
Definitely.
Yeah, so, any questions?
You can make a motion.
Motion?
Can you make a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Closing costs.
Clo, oh, sorry, thank you. So, as with any, as with any refinancing, there is a set of closing costs. Is that in this, Christie?
No.
The closing costs, so we're, we have to pay the, the bond company to refinance it, there's some legal work that has to be done, and that was nineteen total, correct? So for the closing costs and the legal work, it's a total of nineteen thousand that the city will have to outlay to do the refinance. What we're proposing is that we take that nineteen thousand out of reserves to pay that, and the reason we're thinking that is that that's a nice clean, it wasn't budgeted, we pull that out of reserves to pay for it. We are currently running well under budget at mid-year, and so that we're expecting that we'll have overages to go back into reserves at the end of this budget year, so that's kind of the city's thoughts.
Sounds like a solid point. Paying nineteen thousand to save one point two million?
Yeah.
Would you do that?
I would, yeah.
Yeah, I kind of think so. Okay. Again, that, that's why I was trying to give credit where credit was due with Christie and Isaac's work on this project.
Absolutely. We need a motion to approve that.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve. Paying nineteen thousand to save one point two million. Second.
We have a motion and second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Other business, so we put other business on the agenda for council members, if there was something that you guys wanted to discuss that hadn't made it on the agenda. Do any council members have other business? John, you might be surprised I have some. Misty, I was going to get an update on your work on the exit survey.
Oh, it has slipped my mind, I haven't done anything since the last meeting, I'm sorry.
Okay, but you are still working on the exit survey with our committee members, okay?
Two years later, I'm still working on that, just kidding.
I'm going, I'm going to fire you from the committee. All right, no other business. Finally, mayor's comments, I just want to remind everyone, the Fourth of July, we are celebrating that on July the third. Anyone that's going to be around, please let Chad know if you can help, that is a major undertaking, as you guys are aware. Chief Halliburton, we do a Fourth of July, we typically feed two thousand to twenty-five hundred people, it's all free.
It's one of the biggest ones around.
Yeah, it is.
It is.
You feed people, they come out of the work.
But.
It's free, I'll take it.
Tysons, I think, donate some of that, Harps donates to it, there's a lot of support that we get donating food, food items, we have several, several other vendors who donate cash to it. Highland Dairy donates a bunch of ice cream that we hand out, so really great event, but please reach out to Chad, he told me prior to the meeting that he does need some extra volunteers, they're, they're changing up the, the service, the way they're, they're handing it out, the way they're preparing the food this year, they're trying to get more and more efficient, so if you can, please do help with that. I was going to point out, we do have some new construction going on over on Highway seventy-one, we've got a commercial building going up, and there has been, I think, some questions, and Isaac and I have had some questions about the surveying on Main Street, looks like they're, they're surveying for the bridge replacement, not to get excited about that. I started surveying for the one out on Highway seventy-one that they're replacing at Rock Creek, you know, a year or so prior to, and they're, they're still, you know, they haven't started that, so, but that's what that survey work is, it's just in preparation of, of the bridge replacement, so.
How long is that going to keep the road closed down?
We don't have any, we don't have any details on that yet, so one, we don't know when they're going to start, two, that's, that's going to be a major concern for the chiefs, you know, how are we going to route around that, what's that going to look like? And we don't know, we don't know if it, you know, will it be a one, one-way traffic through there?
Woolsey and Dyck Creek, yeah.
But can we, can we keep that as a one-lane as they build? Will they, will they start building somewhere else and leave that completely open and then shit, you know, I, I don't know, there's, you see them on those overpasses and other bridges, and they have a lot of, a lot of different things that they can do to, I think, support us as far as maintaining our emergency services during that timeframe, but, but we don't know yet, is the answer.
That's a concern for sure.
Alderman, Collins?
Are you done? I'm waiting on you to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Thank you, guys.